April seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. Review of work session discussion meeting minutes.
I had some changes.
Department head report?
I've got several updates. Wasn't here last week, so. I sent an email to the board commissioners. Corey in the law team yesterday received the numbers for the floats at the lift station. That share goes with you. I just wanted to let you know that I'm gonna proceed with that. Send the purchase order request and everything to Director Sefron. So that stuff should be coming across your desk. We like the it's things are the numbers are starting to come in. And I'd like to get this wrapped up. It's been it's been awhile, so.
What's what's the price on the?
Submit two thousand dollars. That's for that's for the the system itself. There will be additional costs that I'm still waiting for for the installation. And I'm getting those numbers from different vendors. Big weekend last past weekend. Trial fishing, Brady's Run Park and Brush Creek Park are all cleaned up from the from the opening day. The weather was, what I understand, was fantastic, so it was a good number of people. With that being said, at this time, I would like to publicly thank a little girl named Haven Rooney Scott. Haven is six years old, and she and her family volunteered their time to pick up trash at Brady's Run Park during the trial fishing weekend. And they also pick up any litter that they find while using the park's trail systems. And she does this just to save the earth. So so thank you to Haven and God bless her. Also, we are we're in full swing of things now. Grass we're cutting grass for the first time today throughout the parks. So busy with stuff like that. We're also trying to get the ball fields ready for the Life Steps tournament that will be held next weekend. Commissioner Armadillo received a phone call about downed trees on the trails in Brady's Run Park. So we will also be addressing that issue as soon as we possibly can. Installation installation of the drains at Brush Creek Park. It has been delayed a little bit for this week because of the wet weather that we got on Sunday. As everyone knows, that is a low line flood plan, and it's soft. We cannot get our equipment on there. The skid steers to dump the gravel and stuff into the into the ditches for the for the fresh drains. So that is a priority, so we will be addressing that. Get back in the swing of that as soon as we possibly can. We have received a couple other requests from the Riverside Soccer Organization. They wanna spend use their cleaning the bathroom, rolling one of the fields that they use. They've gotten some hot mix patch donated to them that they're requesting to patch the road from the entrance of the park to the parking area where they go in, where they the parking area that they use for their games. And they also want permission to work on the drains at the softball field, which I thought this was they this was addressed a few months ago. And that was they were denied to use the the access to the softball fields. But I'm still gathering information on these requests. As soon as I get them, I will forward them on to everyone. I believe Commissioner Armadillo had a question last week about the shelter at the horse arena that I had discussed prior to my vacation. It was my understanding that the electrical service was not to be replaced because of the cost, but the shelter will still be available for use. It will not be demolished. There is some minor repairs that can be done to the roof that at first thought that maybe we could just leave those alone. Didn't affect the structure. But after discussing with Justin, our carpenter, he feels that he can make those repairs very minimal cost, if any cost at all, with some supplies he already has. So we will address the the minor repairs that are needed at that shelter. That's it.
Any questions for Dan? Here's the department head reports. Forward to the solicitor's report.
To sort of tie off with Dan's report on Brush Creek, I received a call this week from the solicitor for North Swickley Township. And he is requesting that officials from North Swickley Township and also Marion Township where Brush Creek Park lies meet with county officials. They wanted to according to him, they wanted to address various issues. Those issues concern just general maintenance with the park and also the sheriff's department controlling of the park. So if the commissioners are all right with that, I'd like to probably set up a meeting with Dan Cole, representative of the sheriff's department, with representatives of North Swickley and Marion Township to sort of hear out their issues in this house with them, what their concerns and issues are with the park.
Will you be scheduling that? Their way of work or?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can either be here or we can meet at the park. I'll work with them to see what they feel is best. And I guess with me and Dan, I don't know if they want to walk through and sort of show you there's various issues that they had. That makes me more productive. So probably would be up there.
And those are the only two municipalities that touch the park?
Franklin Township might be in there a little bit, I think.
Do we want to include them?
We certainly must we set up that meeting, we can probably let them know as well, too, if they would want to participate. So we'll work again, that's good. And then the other matters I have are litigation and personal matters for executive session.
Do you have any heard back from Mr. Craig, if correct?
On the assessment of the way of not. I would expect generally about ninety days from time to time, the appeal that you get a decision on whether that they will accept the appeal or not. And we're getting pretty close to that ninety day period now.
Any questions, any other questions for solicitors? Board of Commissioners, we will go first back to the solicitors. We're going to read a proclamation for a telecommunications communicated week. We will be reading it today since we have some here as representatives here and then passing it on Thursday at a public meeting, so.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas an emergency occurs, the prompt response of the police officers, firefighters, paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of the property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Beaver County Police Fire Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Public safety telecommunicators are a single way to link for our public off police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Telecommunicators of Beaver County Emergency Services Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism toward the performance of their job in the past year. I'll therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Beaver, a fourth class county under the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that April fourteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. In honor of the Beaver County men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe.
Eric, I don't think Eric and I guess his staff, we have four four members?
Yep.
Okay. We can't thank you enough for what you do for the county. I think it goes a lot of times unthanked because they don't realize who takes those calls. And without the quick response that you guys get and are occurring to do, a lot of lives could be saved as it renders. So we thank you for your service and we continue to support anything our now willing U.S. needs, so.
I agree, Eric. I applaud you and your entire staff. You're there twenty-four hours a day for Beaver County. And you hear the worst of the worst and the most tragic. And you handle it very, very well. Not everybody can do your job. And I applaud you for your leadership and all of your staff that are dedicated and take this role on because, like I said, not everybody can do it. So thank you very much on behalf of all of the people in Beaver County. Thank you for answering the call.
Thank you for the recognition.
Will you stick around for the interview?
Sure. They will.
We 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 can do it on a schedule, please.
Whatever whatever's better for you.
Hold this. I'll be on the. All right. Get together.
Continue with the board commissioners. The only thing that I have is two weeks ago, two weeks ago, I met with represents the sheriff's office, the district attorney's office, several members of the Chiefs of Police Association, where they presented a letter of support for the sheriff's canine that will be discussing over the future. Obviously, the meeting went well. The letters, I think, says it all, that they support another canine coming to the county. We did receive a grant that will cover some of the costs from the dental office program foundation. I I think this board, what we're gonna have to do is decide as the board, because David gets back, he's not here for a family funeral, I believe. Do we want to bring on another canine? Is the first decision, if if we decide yes, the next decision will be, do we want to lease the dog? Is what they're requesting, do we want to purchase a new dog? That's really all that was taken from that meeting. Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, was their their support is for, you know, they did bring up a lot of schools used the county's canines in the past, which they don't anymore. There are several municipalities who are retiring dogs, are not bringing dogs back, so they'll be used in the municipalities also. So there's definitely a need for it, but the board will have to decide, is it the right time, place to to bring a dog back? So I would like probably to continue this discussion next when they're retired.
I agree. Do we know the number of canines in the county?
Seven, currently, yeah.
And you know which municipalities they are? I'm not off the top of your head, I'm just saying that you you know a list of, so we got seven. Okay. And are they all drug dogs, bike dogs? Where are they?
They're. Cala Quapa, Beaver Falls, Beaver Falls Fire Department, Oakwell, Manaca, New Swickley, and the Sheriff's Department of Canines, or our Region thirteen dog is a bomb dog. Those are all the all the other ones who are drug and I'm assuming whatever the other other one is. There's a name here that there's three that are that are being retired. Having all the departments, they just gave me.
They'll do Brighton certainly retire.
Brighton, Ambridge, I'm not sure though. I think Beaver Falls used to have two, I think they're retiring one, I could be wrong. So those are the three, so there used to be ten, but there's seven.
Wouldn't it be worth the conversation to have that donation switched over to one of those municipalities instead of the county taking the responsibility?
I don't know that that's our call. I mean, we could we could suggest that if that's where the board goes. But I think ultimately it would just be that a suggestion that the foundation put out of that door.
So we'll talk about that next one, Tony, it's your next week.
Okay.
And is the sheriff gonna be attending, maybe?
Shoot me in, please.
Are you done?
I am done.
I've had several calls in regards to that energy efficiency RFP that's out. Is there like a flurry of activity where people are companies are looking at this?
We've received two votes so far.
Yeah.
Three three votes so far.
Yeah.
And they still have, I don't know, three weeks. We have a meeting if they want to come up and view the facilities next week. They can meet with Dan.
I just refer them to where the RFP is and if they have any questions to call your office, so. Is there any update on the status of that large stormwater bill that we got from Brighton Township?
We it actually isn't a bill yet.
Oh, okay.
It was a notice of it was a notice that a bill was coming. And we have not yet, to my knowledge, received the bill. However, we have, in the meantime, reached out to Brighton Township. And there's really no update with as far as we're concerned with respect to where we're at on on the two government entities working together on that, but what we're communicating.
Okay.
Let's get the bill in.
Okay. When we were we were at our county commissioners' annual conference, one of the classes that I took was about broadband and how in our different communities, there's no broadband. And that hurts our students because in some of the areas, the students have to drive down to the parking lot of the school to tap into their internet and do their homework. So there's this a bill that is being introduced by Pam's Representative Pam Snyder. She's of Green Township. And I gave her a call. And there's there's an app on your phone that you can download. It's called Tested, T-E-S-T capital I capital T. If you download that app, all it is is it tests your internet download speed and it shows your location. That information is going to be collected by the state to make sure that where where the internet is reaching. And those places that it's not reaching will receive more grant funding to reach them. So I encourage everyone to to download that and get as many points as we possibly can so that we can advocate for more grant funding. These schools need need the access to to the internet. I know my son in Beaver, he doesn't carry a book, he carries an iPad. So these schools don't even have that option in rural areas, so. And I attended the Office on Aging of the over in the Human Services Building. And they're having some really difficulties dealing with the seniors and receiving these spam calls. And these spam calls are asking them to go to the Western Union and send four thousand dollars. And they're doing that. And they're they're asking to, you know, a fraud unit, asking them to read their their credit card number. And and then it's all over with. So they're and that that alarmed me kind of, you know, because there's a lot of older people that live alone. And like my mom, I shh, I can tell her, just don't answer that. Don't if it's not caller ID, you don't know the person, don't answer it. But a lot of these older folks, they they don't know. And so they're they're working on that, trying to, you know, get the word out at the Senior Center for Law. And last night, I attended the CCBC Comprehensive Plan. It's a ten-year plan for the community college. And what was very, very interesting to me is that the roundtable had a lot of discussion and a lot of input into how that college is going to look in ten years and and the plan to get there. And because the commissioners and the board fund the community college, I take an extra sensitive interest to it. Not only is that, I went to school there, so. Their their plans are exciting, their opinions are aggressive. And they're using a a architect for architecture firm from New York. And the the photos and the schematics that they showed were just very impressive. So look for really good things to be coming out of CCBC soon. I think that's all.
Move to other business, any other business? No move to audience participation. Sherry.
Sherry, her solicitor for the Beaver Valley Chiefs of Police Association. I just wanted to stop, I know that Solicitor Morgan has been updating you on what is occurring. But I don't know if we can maybe set a time for me to speak to the board. In two thousand and six, when this rifle range, the Beaver Valley Pistol and Rifle Range was sold to the club, my understanding is there was a number of verbal agreements that occurred that were not put into writing. And now the chiefs are being asked to pay for their qualification when they use the range. And it's my understanding that the agreement had always been that there will not be payment from any law enforcement to the range for qualification purposes. So that occurred in two thousand and six when the sale was. My understanding is there was also another agreement concerning the electricity that's supplied to the Beaver Valley Pistol and Rifle Range. And again, I was not a part of this. I was not solicitor in two thousand and six. I was not solicitor for the chiefs, county, anything. And these are all handshake agreements, so I need to know what occurred. But my understanding is that the county permitted the Beaver Valley Pistol and Rifle Range to utilize already existing electricity and a power source to electrify their fence and a number of lights. That was in conjunction with the agreement that law enforcement will not be charged for the range.
So we're keeping our in the handshake agreement there.
Yes. So today, we do have our Chiefs of Police meeting. It's at noon at the nine-one-one center. And the president from the Rifle Range is attending. I had sent him a letter, I think the board got a copy of the letter I sent to the range. They attended their meeting on the eighth of April. I don't know what's going on internally in their organization. They would not speak about my request really at the meeting and told me they would respond in writing. They responded in writing and asked to attend our meeting. So that's where we stand. I will not take the position on behalf of the board, because I do not represent the board of commissioners. But I'd like to gather some information as to is the position I'm asserting in line with your understanding of these prior agreements?
Could you just update us after that meeting this afternoon?
Yes.
In their name or myself, and we'll we'll communicate with you and then ultimately with the board on what transpires at that meeting, what our next step would be?
Yeah, that would be fine.
For for our knowledge, each police officer has they have to qualify yearly, correct?
They do.
There are two places, I think, in Beaver County to qualify there. There's another range, I think, that they they utilize Hope, I think somebody said. Are they asking each officer to pay or are they asking each department to pay?
So that's what I don't have the information of. So we, as the Chiefs of Police Association, which is not I believe that every chief in the county is potentially a member, they are not active. I understand that some municipalities potentially do their training on their own. But the chiefs, as an association, organize an entire qualification, I believe it's three days. They'll have to do pistol, rifle, and some other things. They organize an entire qualification days on behalf of anyone in the association. Not every municipality participates in that, say, and I'm just saying Hope, I don't know this for sure. Hope will might go and do it on their own. And I don't know if Hope is being charged. I do know that CCBC, through their their program that they have there for law enforcement, they were not charged in the past because one of our board members was the president of that association.
I know, we we do a lot of our SWAT training down there with our district attorneys talk several times and invite the board down to see what they how they train and what they do. And there's always help there, so. They fall there, they're gonna be getting charged now as well.
They are, are they?
I would think so, I don't know from that, but.
And that's what I don't know, is there's a discrepancy between who's getting charged and who's not getting charged. I do know, I did since I did attend the range, we the county potentially saved them a substantial amount of money because they did not have to run electricity. I want to say it's almost a mile, maybe three quarters of a mile, from the range down to the front.
Can we pay for the, ultimately, ultimately pay for it, so?
My understanding is you pay for the fence and there's some lights that are all.
Along that road.
Yeah, tapped into this. So I will keep you updated, I just wanted to let you know that I am negotiating with them. I will not speak on behalf of the board, but I do want to keep you guys updated and see where your position is.
So that brings me to the question, is this chief of police, the sportsman's club, and nobody can speak for the commissioners, so why aren't we at the table?
Well, I did indicate, I did send you a letter notifying you of the position that we were potentially asserting or the role we were saying that the county played. And then I did send an email inviting the commissioners to today's meeting. And it was short notice because I went to their meeting on the eighth. I want to say I maybe got their response on the tenth or eleventh of last week. And I shot an email to see if anyone from the commissioners wanted to attend the chiefs meeting today at noon. So if you would like to attend, you are more than welcome to attend that meeting.
Do you have anything on your schedule?
Well, I could make time for one unfortunate.
It would be and it would be the beginning because we present the guest and handle the guest at the beginning and then we'll move into our regular meeting, so.
Yeah, I'll be there, sure.
Thank you.
Is Lance being started, sir?
We're trying to plug dollars, but I might miss one there.
Any other audience participation?
I know we just left, but I attended the focus forum on Friday and really appreciate the job Lance and everybody's a big supporter of that process. I think it's the best way to go with a comprehensive planning update. And really appreciate the job that Lance and Tim Wetzel and Denny Pucco did in leaving that. So just wanted to say thanks. I didn't know there's any update was gonna be discussed today, but really appreciate that job and hope it continues to be a very robust county-involved process.
I feel like I dropped the ball, I was telling the ten-year plan for CCBC and just missed our.
I was waiting for it to come out of your mouth, honey, but you know.
It just slipped my mind.
No problem.
I apologize, yeah. It was an excellent.
Please convey my appreciation, Clay.
Absolutely.
Any other audience participation? Eric, none? Any reason to reconvene after you've had your session?
I do have an employee matter that I would like to discuss on executive session as well.
We will build to executive session, not reconvene.